Good. All right, welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting. Today's Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. It looks like we have everyone here. Our first agenda item is to approve the minutes from January 4th. Any questions, concerns, changes, comments on the minutes? Anything from the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the final plat for Ortiz. It's lot 20R and lot 20R1 of Murray Track 1.
This agenda item was previously presented in preliminary platform last meeting, January 4th. No changes have been made since, for final review. So basically an overview, this is 2008 Butte View Drive, low density lot. They're requesting to subdivide some site pictures just so you have an idea of what we're looking at here before we look at the final plat. So it's just, it's 20R would be about almost half an acre, .47 acres. And then the second lot would be .3 acres. So both meet the size and lots with requirements for the low density residential housing district. So, and there's the final plat on the screen there with all the dimensions prepared by baseline surveying. Staff recommends final approval of the final plat can be considered for, under the council's consent calendar for Tuesday, February 22nd. We have two representatives from baseline here tonight if they have anything to add to the application. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
We have nothing. Unfortunately, the Ortiz weren't able to attend.
Well, there isn't any changes from the prelim, was there?
No, there were no changes to the original plat that was approved last time.
Any other comments, questions? Anything from the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
We got a motion, second by Dustin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the variance request for a three foot to the 18 foot setback for new residential addition at 1810 Butte View Drive.
Yep, so we're going a couple of blocks away to Butte View Drive, 1810 Butte View. Mr. and Mrs. Farrell are present tonight. So basically what's going on is they're requesting a three foot, or a three foot variance to the 18 foot setback. So meaning the new addition would be 15 feet away from the property line. So that would allow them a new 1,200 square foot addition to their home. Some site pics, as you can see, there's relatively plenty of space, no dimensions on there, but you can see approximately what the property currently looks like. And obviously that's the, they're adding, planning to add to the north. So additional site pictures right there. And there's a bird's eye view of what we're looking at, about 1,100, almost 1,200 square feet to the north and east. So basically there's no perceived issues for traffic visibility and disturbances to public access. So because the West Ida Drive is not really a main thruway. So there's, we do not anticipate any negative consequences if this was allowed to be approved. So staff recommends approval of the variance and the city council public hearing will be scheduled for Monday, March 7th. And the applicants are here tonight if you have any questions for them or if they would like to explain their project.
So we've, we've just got a three foot variance ultimately, right?
And there is a large amount of public right of way there that is unused at this point in time. So it won't interfere with the current traffic flow.
And if West Ida was to be improved, which is on not, it's, yeah, it's a block long, like she says. Oh, it's unlikely that would be on the top priority list for street improvements. But even so, it's only, it only would affect two or three houses.
Was there notification sent to the neighboring housings?
Yes. Signage was posted for 21 days and neighbors within 200 feet of the property boundary were notified and nobody returned comments. So that's sent via certified mail. So we can ensure that people receive the letters and, because it's returned if they don't pick it up.
Any questions from?
I have no further questions.
Well, anything from the public?
Just a couple of things I'd like to say on that.
If you want to step up to the mic and so we can catch you, for anybody listening in, thank you. And introduce yourself on the microphone, please.
I'm Kim's husband, Pat. And what we're looking at is 15 foot to the property line. There's still another 17 feet to the street. West Ida, dead ends going to the west. And West Ida tees off on Pahasapa, which is the next block down. And there's a house right there. So the how, the street will never go through to East Ida. You have to go around. So I doubt this street will ever be developed past this. And to the west, it goes right into the hillside. I don't know if you're familiar with where Kenny Yates lives. His house is literally across the street to the west.
Yeah, no, I, from my point of view, I think it, it's an easy variance. There's, you know, there's no curb and gutter and there's plenty of ditchway there. Even if they need to put another five feet on street surface, there's room, so.
So I said there's 17 feet from the property line, so.
Well, thanks. Any other questions? Concerns, you got a motion?
A motion to approve.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Motion carries to go to city council next week. Or March. Next agenda item is preliminary plat review for Harvest Meadow Estates and Valley View subdivision.
Sorry. Pivot Development Group has submitted a project plan for two new subdivisions along Avalanche Road to the east and west, north of Interstate 90. Basically, we're looking at Harvest Meadows Estates. This is a new mixed use development. Phase one would include three multifamily lots along Avalanche Road frontage. Phase two would include 36 townhome lots, 16 single family lots. And there are some variances to the ordinances requested as we continue along the development process, including variances to lot size requirements, lot width, allowances for some storage units for the multifamily units and so on. You'll be seeing more as we proceed with this plan in the future. And you've got a copy of the plans in person, in the packet that's available online as well. The picture on the screen is utility plan. It'd be serviced by sewer and water. This portion is inside city limits currently. And the city is currently working on a project for sewer and water boring underneath the interstate to provide services to this part of town as it gets developed. Drainage plan moving easterly towards Bearview, Curie with a drain, a detention pond planned. And this is just the phase plan for Harvest Meadows and the next one we'll talk about, which is Valley View subdivision. So this is 27 single family homes designated for workforce housing. And also there would be some variances to city ordinances requested such as lot size, lot width, et cetera. And here's your utility plan again, once again hooked to, excuse me, sewer and water. And drainage plan and the phase plan of both projects. So you'll be seeing several administrative actions coming your way, including rezoning of property. A portion of it is zoned agriculture annexation. The portion that would include Valley View Estates or subdivision is not annexed. So we'll be seeing several things coming in the next few months regarding these subdivisions as they develop. So I've got Kyle Trulore here on behalf of Pivot Development Group. If you would have any questions for the project.
I do have a question for you, Kyle. On the 36 townhomes, are those going to be duplex style? Single level or are they going to be double level or have you decided?
Kyle Trulore with Pivot Development Group, 3380 Canyon View Court. Right now, I'd anticipate those to be that duplex style living. So attached housing with shared common wall. We've got the setbacks kind of set to give plenty of space between the units with the zero in between.
And whereabouts on the lots would it go? Can you go back to the phase plan? Yeah, that one. Which, which area are you thinking for those?
Sure.
So this is townhomes here. This is the multifamily pieces, Avalanche Road. This would be townhomes. And then as we phase out, we'll go into bigger lots.
Single family then, bigger lots.
So everything with the AB designation, that'd be a townhome lot. And you can kind of think of those in pairs. So AB would be one attached dwelling unit. And you've got your transition from kind of your denser multifamily units into the townhomes to create that break and then we'll move into that single family. And as we go up the hill, we anticipate these to be nicer, bigger lots and really take advantage of, you know, some amazing property up the side of that hill.
Thanks, Kyle.
And the street there in blue, the Valley View side, that's where lots are a little smaller than, as she said, than a conforming city lot, but they're also a little deeper. But we're, we're trying to hit a price point on those too.
Can you explain the zoning, the designations you're requesting for the project?
Sure. So if you start, we'll start in the, the blue area up above. That's what I would consider our affordable workforce area. In that area, we've, we've narrowed up the lots, we've deepened them. We've asked for some setbacks to kind of, you know, put those homes in there a little tighter, keep the construction costs lower to allow us to keep that, that lot cost lower, right? And so that's where we've asked for some of those single family reductions to get a little more bang for the dollar to help provide and build these at a little cheaper price. Still doing high quality housing, right? Just being able to utilize less land and less infrastructure cost. You know, we're seeing cost of streets right now jump up exponentially with materials and whatnot. So anything we can do to help, especially on the frontage of a lot, can really make a big difference on, you know, keeping that lot affordable. And so the, the blue areas, the requests in that area are generally along those lines. The green area, which is the multifamily lots, the bigger lots in there, that's essentially set up for apartment style living or multifamily living in which we are thinking that we'll have, you know, probably several buildings with, you know, 10 to 15 units per building. We've, we've requested that we be able to incorporate some storage units into those as well. And the, the storage units won't be your, your typical steel buildings that you see. They'll be built in the style that is going to accentuate the building. So creating some storage that's built into that apartment style complex. So you've got, you know, places to keep your stuff and, and have some garages still available, but be able to work the entire complex. The red area is going to be where we move into those townhomes. That townhome designation, we've, we've kind of worked those lots to best fit what we would say, or what I'd consider a duplex, still giving plenty of room for two or three stall garages on the front of that with plenty of living space back behind. So still plenty deep on the lots, but trying to minimize our frontage along, along the street. That we feel will help kind of hit several points and several different housing options that we see is needed here in Sturgis. So we're trying to use, you know, best planning practices to kind of layer these things in, work from the interstate up the side of the hill and, and continue to do so. And like I said, we do have the rest of these properties kind of planned out to continue the, the blue area to the west, that'll continue to move forward in that same style. We want to expand that affordable housing option. And then above the red, I'd expect that we'd be able to, you know, take and, and lower our density considerably, go into some bigger lots and kind of use some of those natural draws for drainage, keep some of those trees, really create a walkable, livable neighborhood that'll feed off of this area. Does that help a little bit? All right.
So those streets, that's an awful lot of homes. So those streets will be the standard, you know, so you can park, you know, you got good traffic flow?
I have requested that we do parking on one side. We went to a slightly reduced street section. So we've got standard curb and gutter. We'll do driveway cuts in there so you're not having to come back in and cut. And then we've got basically one parking on one side.
Is that the blue section? Is that the blue section?
That'd be blue and red. And then as you move to the north, we'll get out of that.
Lot and house would have a driveway and garage.
Right. We've got, you know, we're, we're looking at basically a minimum of a two stall garage on each one of these with a driveway cut that's 20 foot wide. In the blue area, we are still evaluating some different housing options. I think that we've left these intentionally a little wider than I've, you know, generally would. That lets us do that two stall garage option on each one of these. There is a chance too, though, that, you know, if we're, we're going to try to get down there and really, you know, provide some affordable housing, we might go to a one stall garage. But in that case, you'd still have the two, you'd have a pad for two vehicles out front. I do expect those all to be two stall garages though, in the blue area.
I see in the plans on the Harvest Meadows, there's a typical section for the Avalanche Road portion. You're planning on building out Avalanche Road from the end of the pavement? Is that correct? That's part of the development? Yep. At the developer's cost.
We're working with the city on that right now. So we're, we're evaluating the option of utilizing the TIF to help recover some of the cost of building that street, especially the Avalanche Road portion.
Right. And then it'll just go up to the end of the development for now. And then as you develop north.
Yep. And we'll, we'll bring the, the sewer with us. They're, they're putting water in that section right now. So we'll extend water and sewer through the entire development. And the Avalanche Road section will be running sewer up and through there. And then obviously everything that feeds through the streets.
How tall for the multifamily buildings? Or how many stories, I guess?
Right now, you know, it wouldn't be any higher than the three stories that would be currently allowed under code. And if that were to change, we'd come back in front of you, but I don't anticipate that.
In addition to Avalanche Road, there's also future utility plans as well to extend sewer, correct? As part of the?
Right. If you look at that green, there's like a little green tail that comes up the middle of the right of way and then shoots to the east. We're working with the city to run gravity sewer that'll come up, kind of follow the north side of the creek and then tie into the city system further downstream.
Any other questions? And this is real preliminary and we're just trying to get things started. And there's a lot of moving parts to it. We've got a huge infrastructure projects that we're working through right now. And it is, it has come up to, you know, Avalanche Road also where it ties in down. And we've been in touch with the state on that and had meetings with the city and with the state. So everybody's aware, but all of Avalanche going back to the east is part of the state highway. So anything that's done in there needs to be approved through those channels. So that's, that doesn't happen overnight. But just trying to get things kind of rolling so we can take advantage of some opportunities right now, so.
What's your projection on getting started?
We would like to get started as soon as possible. So the, where we're at is, I mean, we're seeing prices continue to go up. So there's definitely an advantage to getting out there and getting started right now. There's still a lot of, we still have to work through quite a few city processes here. There's still the rezone annexations that are, are running through the planned developments and then working with the city on the TIF. There's also some timing involved with some of these infrastructure extensions, especially the sewer that runs out to the east. So we're still working with Public Works on a couple of different options, you know, one that would be quicker, one that might take a little longer time. So there's, there's still a lot of moving parts, like Bill was saying, but we're really pushing to kind of get this thing and moving here as quickly as possible. There's a, there's an incredible need for housing in this community right now. There's, and so, you know, this is, this is a great piece of property and I'm really excited to be able to do something like this.
Have you talked to the neighbors to the, maybe to the east that have the campground there?
Yes.
And no problems, no issues there?
Well, no, there's, I don't anticipate any issues. They have an easement along that that we're kind of working around with our road design that leads to that campground. But they're well aware that, you know, we're making plans. We have a pretty good relationship with them right now because we have some infrastructure that they take advantage of and they lease from us right now.
Right.
For part of the campground, but.
So we'll, we'll maintain access for them through this street network for as long as they need it. That's part of the easement that they have on this property. So like Bill's saying, we've got the streets kind of, you know, they're, they're in there to serve and, and kind of run through this entire property. But at the same time, we're making sure that we have that spot for the, you know, access to continue to run up to that campground.
I guess I'm going to play devil's advocate there. During the rally, we get all these houses built. Are you going to put something in the sale agreements that say, so that after the first year rally, we don't have a bunch of people coming in and saying, we got too much noise coming through our neighborhood? Because that's the only time that campground's used.
Sure.
Yep. It, it changes.
I'm just asking the question because there's a future potential issue.
Sure. No, and it, and it's a good point. One thing that, you know, we're kind of keeping in mind here is, is that we do have good vertical or we've got good separation from the campground. But yes, during the rally, there's going to be a lot of traffic. But I think that's similar of anywhere you're at in Sturgis during the rally. We all deal with a lot of noise anytime. And so you'll have the campers pulling in and out, you'll have the motorcycles pulling in and out. We'll make sure that the street is capable of handling that traffic through there. Also, like Bill was saying, there's a good portion of this campground that is on our property that we lease back to them. As we continue to develop, there's going to be a certain point where that infrastructure comes out and new housing comes in. So you're going to see the campground size potentially shrink and we'll just make sure that we've got that access set for that exact reason.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, I lived in Denver for a while and we bought a house that was in the flight zone for DIA. In our seller's agreement or purchase agreement, there was a note in there that this is a fly zone for DIA. There's going to be more noise, things like that. Just so people that are coming from outside of here that haven't been to a rally or been here through a rally, they buy there, buy a new house and six months later they have the noise issue.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a great idea. I think.
No, and, and no, I, I completely agree too. That kind of the nice part about what is currently up there is it's, it's mainly camper camping. There's not a lot of noise. It's not a lot of, you know, there's no big party events going on.
Right, it's just more the continuous.
You're going to have some traffic that, absolutely. But even if we do disclose it, which we will, I mean, that's not to say we're guaranteeing nobody's going to complain, you know?
Right, but at least it was there.
Yeah.
They had to change.
No, I really like the idea of just making sure that that's disclosed upfront. Because you're right, we do have a lot of new people moving into the area and we're all fairly used to what, what you get during the rally. Just making sure that they know and recognize that there's campers that will be coming and out. I think it's a good idea.
And there will be some logistics things that we have to work with as we kind of improve that street going up there. Because they do have a check-in station that.
It's basically where that street is, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, you could have traffic back. I mean, it's.
That's the one street that I see having 26 foot with parking on one side could become an issue. We've got one down here that turns into a one-way during rally. You know, having parking on one side and having that traffic flowing through there.
I know.
To the campground.
Sure.
I think that, so a couple of things on that point. Yes, we can have that back up. But the thing is, is that we'll be moving that, that station. So we, we don't want that station down by the, the intersection of Avalanche Road anymore. We're going to push that all the way up to the property line. And you can see kind of on that exhibit, there's kind of a kitty corner set of lines. Move over to the west a little bit. Here. So you can see this is the, that's the actual driveway amusement where it's surveyed in right now that runs up and the campground's up here. We'll push that, that check-in station up to that property so that you've got plenty of room along that gravel as we continue to move to the north.
What I'm saying though is as those campers and stuff start to come in, that 26 foot street's going to get pretty narrow.
Yep. That's the reason why I asked, you know, I, I'm not comfortable with having just.
What is our standard street width, Dave?
60.
That's the right one.
That's the right one. But what's the standard width of street?
Well, it takes 4, 8, 54 feet.
You've got 12 foot driving lanes plus the right of way.
12, 24, yeah.
I mean, usually like.
36 feet on pavement, on pavement back to curb, back to curb.
Yeah.
Right. You know, I guess that would be my one concern, especially the way that it's laid out. The 26 foot street could pose an issue with the parking on one side. Because 26 is narrow.
Don't we have one development here that has 26 foot street?
Stone Creek Estates has less than, has narrower streets. That was approved.
And it's narrow up there if there's.
It is, may I park, they allow parking on both sides?
And they allow parking on both sides? But there, it is a sign for no parking when, during, when there's snow, two inches or more.
Four inches.
Four inches or more. So, and if you, if you sign it for parking on one side, you cut that down. But it still does get pretty narrow at times, yes.
Yeah. You know, and you see some of those rigs pulling in, they're camper plus a trailer, plus a pickup. And they don't drive them every day. So they hug the center. It's just, it's a concern on that stretch through there. And I see your point while you're trying to do it.
Right.
I, I totally understand. It's just a concern.
We do, so, excuse me, coming off of what you can't necessarily see on this exhibit that you can maybe see on some of the other ones, that Avalanche Road right of way is pretty significant. So we do have from Avalanche Road to where the street kicks in there, there is going to be, and I know I'm not, what I'm saying is, is that when you turn in, there's a lot of room in that right of way. So you're going to be fully into the street. That doesn't necessarily change what you're saying. Once you get in there, they're going to be in the middle of the street and they're going to be running up it. I fully see what you're saying.
Yeah, you're going to put a wide throat on it.
Yep.
For the.
For turning into that.
Yeah.
And there's lots of room in the right of way to get that done.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just more concerned about parking on one side.
Sure.
Having a little tight.
Well, and you know, some of the design and theory behind some of the narrower streets too is that it slows traffic down. You know, you take one like Anna Street in Sturgis heading to Vernon Heights. And, and how many times have we changed the speed limit on that thing? Because it's a racetrack, you know? It's, I think that one's like, what, 28, 32 feet? Parking on both sides, you could turn a bus around, but I mean, all it turns into is a Speedway. Or at least in Dolan, you're slowing down, watching for kids, not just blindly hauling through there, but.
You know, when it's all built out and that campground entrance is different, it probably would be okay. I'm just thinking, while you're using that easement up the streets.
Sure.
Another, another kind of point to what Bill's saying there too. One thing that, you know, we're talking about using, this is, you know, a two-week rally event, right? You've got the whole rest of the year when you do want traffic to slow down through here. The other thing that, you know, you'll see is that your long-term cost of owning and maintaining the street drops. Your cost of snow removal. So if you're plowing that big wide street section for every single snow event, that can start to add up if it takes two or three swings to run up and down it. So there are some advantages, especially for your normal operations and for the long-term maintenance of the street where it makes sense to have it a little tighter like that. That's why we, we've moved to this 26-foot section as a pretty common section throughout the hills.
And you've consulted with Public Works, obviously, about this. You've had meetings, the developers have had meetings with Public Works regarding the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, and another thing just from, and this is just with us with this property, you know, of that campground, about 103 sites are ours. As we progress, I mean, our, our shorter-term goal for that piece is to probably take over it ourselves. And then we were going to create another access of Avalanche up higher.
That was my next question. Is if, if you could create a temporary access for the campground till it's built out? Is that possible?
Well, we, we can for the sites that we own and potentially even, I mean, that might not be a bad conversation either for.
You know, move it up north, like across from the church.
That's, that's what, that's what we're proposing with our stuff.
Right. You know, maybe it's one of your future streets and you cut it in as a temporary access, move their check-in station up there.
That's, that's exactly what we've got planned for that, that north area.
But.
But that's only half of it too. I mean, because they, but I don't know how much the difference of traffic. I mean, my guess is, because I think they only have 150 at most right now. So we'd be taking three-quarters of the traffic and pushing it onto Avalanche Road versus running it up that easement. But, but who's to say what they might, maybe they'll expand too, I don't know.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea. We definitely need the lots, that's for sure, so.
Any other questions? Discussion?
With your action, you can include any recommendations that can be considered by, you know, the city council when it comes to their review or any changes that the developer can make in the meantime? And I think we've heard those.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And all abstain? And we do have notes on there, I'm sure, from the discussion on.
Yeah.
We can work through that.
Yeah. No, it's a good discussion. Thank you. Thank you for everybody for taking the time tonight. It's, it's a, it's a significant project and it's a big, you know, this is a big development for the city of Sturgis. So we're excited to be able to do this and be a part of it. And I appreciate the discussion tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. It's Kyle. Other items?
We just have other items that are annual reviews for use on review for residential living and industrial zone and a daycare on Sunset Drive. No violations have been reported, no complaints issued, so we'll just go ahead and renew those again for another year.
All right, thanks. That's everything. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? We're adjourned. I don't think we need to roll call that one.